Good evening, citizens of Lewisburg Town Council. Welcome to our August 12th meeting of the Lewisburg Town Council. And we'll begin by having our roll call.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Stover.
Here.
Councilwoman Woods.
Here.
Councilwoman Stein.
Here.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilwoman Baker.
Here.
And Councilman Clancy.
Item number two, our invocation and Reverend Dr. Roseby. Could I ask you to give our invocation for this evening, please?
That's great that you've all come out in your name. We thank you for this day and we thank you for this evening. We actually bless us on this meeting tonight. That you bless each and every one in this place and that you bless Lewisburg. We ask that you look down upon us and have mercy on us. In your name we pray and give thanks.
All but the pledge of allegiance. Well.
Chief Lee came up together.
Can you call us? Okay. Thank you, Chief. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, item number four, the adoption of tonight's agenda. Council, could I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please? It's been moved and properly second that we adopt tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number five, approval of the minutes for the July 8th meeting. That's our regular meeting. If no corrections or anything on that, could I get a motion to approve the July 8th monthly meeting?
I make a motion we approve the July 8th meeting.
It's been moved and properly second that we approve our minutes from our July 8th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number six. That's a presentation of the Eugene Yarborough Field. And I have something I'd like to read before, and I see that the Eugene, Mr. Yarborough's family is here. And Eugene Yarborough played an essential and transformative role in Lewisburg Parks and Recreation Department for more than 30 years, making a profound impact on the community and the many individuals he worked with over the course of his career. His unwavering commitment to the enhancing the program was evident in every initiative he undertook, reflecting his deep-seated passion for promoting youth sports and recreational activities. Through his tireless efforts in coaching numerous young athletes, he not only taught them the fundamental skills required for success in baseball and other sports, but also instilled the valuable lessons of life that transcended the playing field. In addition to coaching, Mr. Yarborough dedicated himself to guiding children of all ages, providing mentorship and support that helped them to cultivate their talents and realize their full potential. This empowering guidance enabled many of his mentees to reach remarkable heights in their athletic pursuits, securing not only trophies and accolades, but also fostering a sense of teamwork, discipline, and perseverance that they would carry with them for the rest of their lives. His positive influence inspired countless young athletes to believe in themselves and strive for excellence, leaving a lasting legacy in this community. In recognition of his extensive contributions and the heartfelt dedication he showed throughout his illustrious career, we are sincerely grateful for all that he has accomplished. To honor his lifelong commitment to the Lewisburg community and the impactful role he shared in the lives of young athletes, we wish to ensure that his legacy endures for the future generations. Therefore, we are proud to announce a designation of the baseball field at Johnna Park as Eugene Yarborough Field. This naming serves not only as a tribute to his remarkable achievements, but also as a continual reminder of the profound difference one dedicated individual can make in the lives of many. And to his family, I'd like to... Andrew, could you come forward as well? And the diamond, Eugene Yarborough, ready. Come forward. This is the sign that will go up on the field. I want to come here and, "Eugene Yarborough, thank you for allowing us to keep parade for all of these years and helping mentor young kids." Same as you. This is, this will go on the baseball field, and it will be around the little gate there. So whenever anyone hits a home run, they'll see this sign.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, town manager, and everyone here. On behalf of my entire family, I want to thank you for this incredible honor. Having the baseball field. And enough for my dad. For him giving more than 30 years of volunteer service to the town of Lewisburg and Franklin County. It's something that we always cherish. A lot of you might not know, but daddy coached more than just baseball. He did 20-plus years coaching the Lewisburg Lions football team. And with half of that, he was a director after it separated from the town of Lewisburg. He also coached basketball for a few years, and like Brent said at his funeral, we think he even coached soccer one year. My dad didn't do this for recognition. He did it for the kids. It wasn't just, he was just a coach. He was a mentor to all my... He believed that baseball taught more than just, just to throw and hit. He taught respect, discipline, teamwork, and resilience. He believed in showing up, putting in the hard work, and doing things right the right way. And he led by an example. Year after year, season after season, he believed sports was about teaching life lessons. He taught kids how to win. And most important, how to handle loss with grace. He believed that what happened on the field or on the basketball court is shaping them to the kind of people to be in the real, to be in this real world. And he took responsibility too hard. He would have the biggest smile on his face telling us when he ran into someone he coached years ago, or when he sat down and watched someone he coached playing college football or professional football on TV, or somebody on a mound of pigeon in the big leagues. Being on the ball field was one of his favorite places to be and sometimes seemed to be a second home because it brought the community together. It was never about, it was never about him. It was about creating a space where kids can grow, learn, and be part of something bigger than themselves. This past year, daddy received something in the mail all the way from Washington State. He didn't know who it was. He opened it, and it was a graduation invitation from somebody he coached. That just shows you this kind of person he was, the impact he had on his players. To those of you that had a heart or a vision to make this happen, thank you for recognizing his dedication and honoring his legacy in such a lasting way. And to the community, thank you for supporting him in all the years and for being part of what made this work so meaningful to him. Now with his name beyond the field, every game played, there would carry a piece of spirit, one of service, sportsmanship, and love for the kids. Thank you.
Item number seven, public comment. This is the time where we give the citizens three minutes to share anything that you would like to share with the council in the town of Lewisburg. I have on the list Mr. Scott Strickland.
Good evening, town council.
Good evening.
Firstly, I'd like to say, you know, I'm glad y'all's educated at the ball field, Mr. Yarborough. My grandson always played in the Lewisburg League, and we played against his team. And my grandson won't hit any good, and Mr. Yarborough pulled him to the side one day when everybody got there early and showed him how to hold it, how to do it. And, you know, I appreciate y'all's dedication to that field. You know, I was telling Ray Wong, you know, I can see him out there right now, that smile. No matter how bad a day he had, them kids, he was there, and he was focused. And I appreciate y'all dedicating it to him because it means so much. You know, as these kids go on up, they still look back where they started at and what they accomplished. And that's what we're here to do, is be mentors to them and raise, get them raised up to do what they need to do in life. But I appreciate you doing it. But the other thing that I'll come talk about today, is you know, I have a group that's a community emergency response team. We were sponsored by the Franklin County Commissioners. The, we've gone on and on and on. And I'm coming to ask if we can find some way to put in a ramp down at the river, make it easier to get boats in and out when we have a disaster, emergency, or what have you. I mean, it's getting more and more. And by the time you tow them over and get them down there, we need to, we need to find a way to work together to make emergency services, well as people coming in with bigger resources than what we got. And I'm just asking the board to come up with a committee to look into this and make it much better on all of us, because by the time you get there, time is a essence of getting in there, you know, finding people. If, you know, if you can't get in there for a little while, I mean, it's just a bad thing. But I believe we've done everything possible in the last search we done. My group was out there for eight days along with some others, and we all done the best we could do with what we had to work with. But I'm just asking the town, please look into less putting a boat dock down there. You can put up a gate to secure it. I mean, we just got, we got to do better than what we're doing because we got to have a faster response in there. You know, by the time you get, people hear from Apex, now Lewisburg's got some boats, that's a great thing. We, my group's also got a boat now, and with the boat coming out of Bud, we're, we're going to need more access. But aluminum boats get heavy. The rubber rafts are easier that you can tow, but with equipment and stuff, the aluminum boats is really heavy. By the time you get exhausted, you know, we just need to work together and, and let's see, see if we can't get this dock in out there. Or, and I hope we don't never, ever have another drowning, but we need to be prepared when it does happen. And that's part of what the search group does, is parentice, emergency, and stuff. Teaching the people and getting them ready for the next disaster, as we do, is what I've been doing across the county, as well as the Yarborough search team too. But they're sponsored by the fire department out of Yarborough. And then the other thing, you know, I appreciate all the stuff as I taught and teaching everyone of how precious all the guidance that y'all do. And I just want to tell you, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Ms. Anne Brown.
I'm here tonight to ask the council what is being...
Ms. Brown, let me ask you, give you a name and address, please.
Okay, Anne Brown, 301 Edgewood Drive. Okay, go ahead. Okay, I'm here to ask the council what they are doing about the condition out at Oakwood Cemetery, about the fact that it's not being maintained properly. I've done some research on it, and it's, there is a commission, there's a North Carolina Cemetery Commission that handles complaints if cemeteries are not maintained. And the one at Oakwood certainly is not. When I go out there, it is almost a forest. You can't walk out there. Now, I know, I see that it is on the agenda. I hope something is going to come up, be brought up about it. But it does need to be, something needs to be done on it because it's a place where our people are buried, and they need to be respected. I thought last year everything was going to be worked out, but apparently it was not because this summer it has been terrible. July 4th, it wasn't good. And there was a time when it was extremely hot, and I can see that. And that cemetery is difficult to keep up because of the raised monuments. But something needs to be done. There needs to be some kind of contract, some maintenance on there, and it needs to be every two weeks or whatever to maintain it. So when families do go out there, they feel the respect the town has for those people who are buried out there. And there is something else. You know, has the town ever thought about creating a commission or just a group of people to handle questions about the cemetery? Somebody tells me there's three cemeteries here in town. I only know of two. But I think they all deserve to be kept up. They all deserve the same, same respect. So I don't want to have to pursue it any further, but I am aware that there is a state commission that will handle problems if a cemetery is not maintained. And the next meeting for that is October.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Will Mitchell.
Do y'all hear me? Chris, I want to thank you personally for not calling me first because I had to compose myself after listening in front of Ray. So I appreciate you giving that time. Will Mitchell, 128 Edgewood Drive. I was unaware that on the agenda tonight, y'all are discussing proposition of putting in some speed bumps and possibly a stop sign or two on Edgewood. And my wife took my supper and then go speak in favor of that. Poor Dr. Stover had misfortune of being paired with me in a golf tournament a few weeks ago, and I chewed him about that. Pretty fair golf road there, by the way. But Edgewood is definitely a problem. Y'all, me with Dr. Rick does the Progressive Insurance commercials, try to stop turning into your parents. Well, my wife and I are turning into our parents because we literally sit on our front porch and scream and yell at people that are flying down our road. We've got neighbors, most of the people on Edgewood are retired. I've got two neighbors that have mobility issues. So if you folks would kindly consider the speed bumps, if you get concrete, I'll build them, I'll put them in for them. One more thing my wife asked me to address, I don't keep up with what's going on with the trash pickup. I just throw it in the bin. My auntie told me there's some type of scuttlebutt about some proposed changes to pick up once a week and be curbside. Doesn't affect me one way or the other, but here again, I've got some neighbors that have mobility issues, and I can tell you at least two of them physically cannot get their trash receptacle to the roadway. I will certainly get it there for them, but I just ask that you consider the other folks in town. in town that may not have a neighbor that'll do that. As far as the, once a week, I got two teenage girls and I can fill up your truck with Amazon boxes in a week. But as far as the speed bump, I would really appreciate you can put it in front of my house. You can crisscross it, I don't care what you do, as long as we can slow them down, it would be the most appreciated. Doc, I'll see you on golf.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you for your comments. And as usual, we do take these comments in strong consideration. Thank you. Item number eight, report from the EDC Committee. Anyone here to?
They don't have representatives, but I was at that meeting. And I think that they had agreed to do just bullet points of what we discussed. Mainly, it was more of a free-form discussion about the future of the EDC. Let me think back. I think that idea was move to less formal, agenda-driven conversation and more bring in walk-ins, what's on your mind? Have you like found out about something you want to share with the team? Potentially moving their meetings to bimonthly rather than monthly. But they did agree to meet again in September. And there was a request that they have at least a couple members representing their group have a, maybe a quarterly sit-down with the mayor and administrator just to have a more direct back and forth. Nothing too heavy, just talking through what could maybe improve communication in the future.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Baker. All right, item number nine, resolution to install speed bumps on Edgewood Drive, Allen Lane, also, and add two signs at Wilder Street and Edgewood. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. So at the last meeting, David Campbell brought to our attention that there was some concerns along Edgewood Drive of speeders. They come around the curve and they put the pedal to the floor. And their, their concern was for everybody in the neighborhood. And so the week or so later, we met with Mr. Campbell and he kind of showed us the areas of concern. And we agreed with him that Edgewood was a concern, but as we were talking, we discussed that if traffic slows on Edgewood, there's going to shift over to Allen Lane, parallel straightaway that's in front of the high school. And so our suggestion from myself and staff is to install four sets of speed homes, two on Edgewood Drive and two on Allen Lane, approximately in front over near 118 and 128 Edgewood and near or in front of 202 and 212 Allen Lane. Our initial findings, we think that's spaced out well enough that there's not time to speed up, slow down, speed up. And it'll hopefully deter everyone from speeding through the neighborhood in Allen Lane, reduce the speed there if they were to shift. And then we noticed at Wilder Street, if you're headed north on Edgewood, you're coming up on a hill and it's not a four-way stop. And with the trees in the area and the, the hill right there, we thought it would be wise to install two stop signs and make that a four-way stop. And you see that none of this is in our ordinance. And so we thought the, the best thing to do is make you guys aware of the conversation we had with the residents and see what your thoughts are and seek your approval to move forward with this.
I don't have a question. I fully support what you're recommending, but I don't think it's enough. We've got this problem all over town. And I think first is Church Street. We got the same problem on Church Street that you got on Edgewood. And you got the college kids coming up and down there. And I like to use that as a drag strip. But this, and we've been discussing the problem on Main Street. You know, the traffic's far too fast. I've been talking with some of the people at the state and, you know, the DOT has dragged their feet on our recommendations on things to slow traffic on Main Street. And the recommendation I got is we need to lower the speed limit throughout the entire town. I would recommend that we drop the citywide speed limit from 35 to 25. I think 35 is far too fast on residential streets. Because 35, you know, in reality equals 40, 45. And people flying up and down our residential streets. So I would like to add to the resolution that we reduce our citywide speed limit from 35 to 25.
Is that something we can do?
On our streets, we can.
Oh, yeah, on our streets. You mentioned Main Street and the problem with Main Street is because...
We can't do it on Main Street, but the people I've been talking to says if we do it for the citywide, that puts a lot of pressure on DOT to do it also on Main Street.
I'm interested in like researching that, but I would prefer to approve this resolution as is with the follow-up for that rather than taggy this on without doing our due diligence.
Well, we already have some 20 mile per hour signs on South Main Street.
Yeah, but that's only for a short stretch. I'm talking about all the resident, right now, all our residential streets, the speed limit is 35.
Okay, the problem is when you come off 39 from Henderson, coming down North Main, you're coming down here. You come through town, you're still down here. You go to the depot, you go down here. And the stop, the change is, is right there between the old Foley Hay Store and Richardson.
We've already addressed that.
And, uh-huh.
We, we made a resolution asking DOT to change the speed limit on Main Street to 25. We have no control over Main Street.
Okay, well, some signs are out there because we were talking about them last week while I was driving down Main Street.
What signs?
Uh, 20 miles per hour sign.
Yeah, that's, that's been there forever. We talked about making Main Street 25 from 39 to 56. And we made that, we actually passed a resolution to that effect and sent it to the DOT, when it's been sitting there, went down three, four months at least. I mean, the T, somebody, somebody told me, and excuse me, I'm not talking very well tonight, I had some surgery on my lip. But the DOT only cares about one thing, that's moving people from one point to another as fast as possible. All right? And, you know, if we want to improve the situation here in town and decrease the risk of people getting, pedestrians and bicyclists getting hurt, we're going to have to do some steps to improve our situation. We have control over our residential streets. And I don't think we need any research, I think we just need to do it. And then we go back and put more pressure on DOT to do something about Main Street. But traffic is far too fast, far too many places in this town. And I don't think we should do like the FAA does, wait until somebody gets killed before we make a resolution.
Mr. Brown, in reference to the speed bumps, there are different kinds. The, I know that the fire response is something that we do not want to hinder. There are the long, thicker speed bumps. Is that what we would be putting in, something so that the emergency response vehicles have to slow down or make a stop to go over? Or what kind of a speed bump are you considering putting in? And then the other problem is you're addressing Allen, you're addressing Edgewood, and then there's going to be Smoke Tree. So that's what everyone is going to do, is pop down Smoke Tree and away we go. So we're just pushing the problem to the next location. So I know that last month, in the meeting, when the Campbells came and spoke, my question is, I, I would assume that we increase police presence in that area, was that effective or an effective measure to help slow anything down, do you know?
I don't know if that happened or not. Shortly after the meeting, I had to defer to Chief Lincoln. I'll have to check this citation.
I mean, did we, did we put, was that helpful at all, do you know, by any chance?
I know they've been out there. I don't know how much they've been to actually give speeding complaints all over town, so they have to jump around quite a bit.
I understand.
But I guess I can see what they've done in that area.
I'm not opposed to the speed bumps, but it is an all-over-town problem. It's in front of my house. We have people physically drag racing. We have the noise. And I understand we're not going to be able to write a citation to everybody who speeds or has a loud muffler, and I respect that. I don't want to take all these measures and then we just push the problem onto Smoke Tree because they'll be in here next month. So do you know what kind of a speed bump we're going to put in?
Yes, so we're considering installing bolt-down hard rubber, about two, don't quote me, they're two or two and a half inches tall. They'll extend the length of the road just in about six inches from each edge to allow the water to pass through. And as this, if this is approved and something to consider as we, you know, essentially move the problem, this project, as we've explained it, which also includes the signage for speed, speed bumps ahead, this total project with the 60 or so feet of speed homes is going to run about $2,600.
In total, or...
Yes, for the whole project.
Better than I would have thought.
And they're, they're, they've worked well at other places. You see these types of speed homes installed in various locations and they're bolt-down. If they don't work, you can remove them, we can install them somewhere else with, you know, little to no damage to the street, so.
I like the flexibility of it. That's why I was picturing the...
They're, they're, it's a flexible option.
I, I think this is a good start. And yes, maybe it gets pushed on to Allen or Smoke Tree, but as Mr. Campbell was saying, I think it's been a while since it's been over there. The stop sign is on Wilder, so Edgewood is where they go straight through.
Right.
So they're already avoiding Allen, Wilder, and Smoke Tree because there are stop signs, there's uphill inclines that make it more difficult to speed. So if you put the rate limiters on the free-for-all way, then yes, you'll have some people over, but it would be more difficult for them to speed in those conditions.
Now, when these speed bumps go diagonally across the road, or I've seen some that goes across the road at an angle.
They'll be perpendicular.
Okay, okay. Now, why is, is there a difference why they place them like that?
I have not looked into that, no.
I understand they can knock your car out of line and hit one. Also, Dent Lane would qualify for speed bumps as well because they, they come flying down there and they have kids on that street. So, so as we look at this, there will be other streets I think would qualify for speed bumps as well. Now, back to the question about the citywide speed limit. And, and I like to perhaps maybe defer this question to Ben. Is there any restrictions that, that would prevent us from automatically changing the speed limit for all of the city streets? Do we have to get any type of state permission to just do that within the jurisdiction of the town?
Not through neighborhood.
Okay, we, you're saying we could do that for neighborhood street?
So we could, we, just to follow up on that, we could look at some options for signage for posting citywide speed limits. And then also just keep in mind that your typical speed limit sign, if the, if the general signage does not seem sufficient, you know, every sign, sign and post is about 100 bucks to have, to install it, 60 for the sign and all the pieces.
It's a much bigger project, and that's why I say I don't get to, but I would like to give you a month or two to do a bigger impact analysis before we just throw that in.
Can you follow with that type of a speed bump inhibit any type of emergency? You're good with that? Okay. Thank you.
I do have one thing, just to wrap this up on my end, is we had a good conversation with David and the biggest, the biggest help that, you know, at the operations level that we have is our residents bringing us, you know, and you guys of course too, but what the, what their concerns are because they're the boots and the eyes on the street and, you know, we can't catch everything ourselves. So it was just a real good example of, you know, somebody seeing the need and making it known. And there's no, in this case, we're able to respond and hopefully provide a resolution. But if we don't know, we can't help.
I really appreciate the follow-up. I know Phillips Slater is probably tired of me pointing out samples.
I moved that we approve this resolution.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been moved the property second that we approved the resolution for installation of speed bumps on Edgewood Drive, Allen Lane, and add two signs at Wilder Street and Edgewood Drive. Okay? I think there's a... Council action.
I've got to read this.
Okay, revise that motion.
A resolution to install speed bumps on Edgewood Drive and Allen Lane and two stop signs at the intersection of Wilder Street and Edgewood Drive.
I don't think we need to read this. Isn't it like the, the only...
No, I haven't read it before.
Yeah. No, it's only where she knows what to do. That's why she does it. But Terry brings this like quasi-divisional, so we don't need to read that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. That again, to approve the resolution for installation of speed bumps on Edgewood Drive, Allen Lane, and add two signs on Wilder Street and Edgewood Drive. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, item number 10, resolution to declare surplus and sell items on govdeals.com.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, last month, we presented a list of items from our cleanup that we requested be surplus to sell on govdeals. The first round, we'll call it, proved successful. We've sold $18,867 worth of items that were formally taking up space, things that hadn't been used in a long time that were obsolete or beyond their useful light to us. So as we continue to clean up, we've identified a list of items that we're requesting be surplus and if they don't sell, dispose of properly. We have two stainless steel range hoods. I understand that they were purchased with intent for the new town hall and that is no longer part of the plans. They've been sitting since 2019. There's a broken zero-turn lawnmower that has a blown motor. There's three three-point implements that haven't been used in over five years, a broom, a small scraper, and a cedar. There's an obsolete stripe painter for painting street signs. It's like a pressure cooker design, it's, it's very old, hasn't ran in at least five years. There's traffic lights that someone collected and is placed in the building. As you know, we don't maintain any traffic lights here. There's an outdated chipper that somebody will most likely buy for the diesel motor. The chipper itself is, does not have a safety bar and is not sufficient for our needs. There's a pile of concrete flower pots sitting around, somebody might use. As you know, we bought a new Christmas tree. As you know, we bought a new Christmas tree for public display. We're requesting sale of the old one. That one, of course, if there's another option, you know, we're open to some ideas. There's a pile of miscellaneous door slabs. There's obsolete handheld and vehicle mount radios with chargers. And there is laptop car mounts that no longer fit the police's, the police department's current fleet. So I'm asking that these items be declared surplus and we will place them on govdeals and auction them off to the highest bidder.
Any questions?
Mr. Brown, I have a question for you. For instance, the range hood, that was a twenty-five thousand dollar investment for Depot Hill that has been sitting at the operations center for years now. So say someone gives us fifty dollars for it. Does that fifty dollars go back into the grant, grant fund money for Depot Hill?
I do not know how they were purchased. But those items, they were what, twelve thousand five hundred a piece? Or for both? I'm not, I'm not sure yet. I, I only found the packing slip so far. But anyway, if it's twenty-five thousand, you know, we'd probably put it up and ask twenty-two for the first round and, and see what happens, trying to recoup most, knowing that most likely it's not realistic to get the new price for something that's.
Sure. I was just worried about since that came out of grant monies that that would go back into that fund since that's technically not our money.
The money goes back to the department or fund that it was spent originally.
It does. So things that are for the, say, electrical department, they'll get that money back or the police department so that they can put that into their equipment fund?
Yes.
All right, any other questions from the council? If not, could I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the declaration of the surplus and dispose of it properly.
It's been moved and property second that we approved a declaration of surplus and proper disposal of items not sold, surplus items. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Can we switch eleven to thirteen and keep the solid waste policy last? That might be, that has the potential to be the most time consuming.
You're suggesting that we switch? Which one? You want to, which one you want?
I'm sorry, eleven and fourteen. It, it may not be, but.
Okay. So you want to talk about fourteen right now? Is that right? Line item fourteen? Twelve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and then eleven.
Okay. All right. We'll go to line item twelve, resolution to award the contract in accordance with the RFP for cemetery maintenance service.
So over the past few budget sessions and town council meetings, we have heard of and also during the day in the office received complaints regarding the cemetery, specifically Oakwood Cemetery. Lack of attention to detail, headstones not being trimmed. Was it cut? Was it not cut? Did they blow the grass off the headstones? Why are they piling the garbage up next to the tree? Why was it not cut on these holidays? You know, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, things like that. And we follow up with the current contractor and kind of the response that we get is, you know, we're coming back tomorrow, is the standard response to finish up. We didn't finish today, we'll be back tomorrow. Well, anyway, the council had requested that we reach out and consider putting out an RFP for contract cemetery grounds maintenance, which we did. And we did that because the current contract that's in place does allow for dissolution of the existing contract with a fifteen day written notice. So we spoke with the current contractor. We solicited, solicited him for this bid, let him know that we were seeking potential new vendors and why, and gave him the updated RFP, which included an updated list of key holidays, if you will. The existing, the existing contract, two key points is it only references two cemeteries. It does not reference all of the holidays that the town now expects to be manicured for. And also it allowed for spraying of essentially weed killer in certain spots at the cemetery. So specifically, if you were to, at one point, if you were to ride out to cemetery on the hill, you'd see a bunch of dead grass and that's why. So there was some, there was some confusion, but it was in the contract. So we cleared up, we cleared that up and we put out a RFP. And we received three proposals. One was incomplete. We received two complete proposals and our current contractor did not submit a new bid. So for everyone's information, the current provider is providing services. Two months out of the year, he mows one time, those are the winter months, and then the rest of the year, it's biweekly. So I think it's a total of thirteen cuts, thirteen times they're expected to show up and provide maintenance. The current fee that we're paying is thirty-seven thousand sixty-eight dollars for our, the services for two cemeteries. And like I said, we included the, we don't really know what to call it. We call it the cemetery at South Main. So if you go down South Main Street and Mineral Springs Road or Mineral Springs Street, I'm not too sure yet, but there's a nice, Mineral Springs Road. Yep. Yep, there's a nice black steel fence and within that is a long forgotten cemetery. And so it, it goes by unnoticed and, you know, one of the things when we were discussing this at the staff level was if it's a cemetery, it needs to be included, right? Just like the resident says, that all of our cemeteries deserve the same attention, the same respect. And so we included that. And the two complete bids that we received, Valencia Lawn Care provided a bid for fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Tri Oak Landscaping provided a bid of fifty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Those are the two complete bids that we were able to consider. And going through the bid packages, Mr. Valencia was able to provide not only great references, his references took the time to make handwritten letters on his behalf. And we also wrote out to, I think it's Haywood Baptist Church and Cemetery to see some of the work that he currently does and we were pleased. You could tell that they were there even though it wasn't the same day, right? It was, it was blown, it was trimmed and it was presentable. So if the council chooses, we can dissolve the contract with a fifteen day written notice to the current contractor. And we can offer a contract to Valencia Lawn Care. If we do that, this is going to result in an increase of sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And most likely, I think right now that would come with a, with a budget amendment, whenever those, towards the end of the year when they occur. So if there's any questions regarding this conversation.
So the present contract that have missed sometimes when they were supposed to cut?
We don't know that he's missing, but there's been some longing for communication. Hey, I'm coming to cut. Hey, I'm done cutting, come inspect it. And when those phone calls happen, of course, it picks up and then it dies back down. And recently, after we've received word of completion of mowing and trimming, we've ridden through and I think a couple of weeks ago, maybe last month, like Ms. Stein had pointed out, there's a pile of trash up at the far side next to the tree and the, the headstones are not consistently trimmed, you know, on both sides and the grass isn't blowing off the headstones, the flat stones in particular. And so.
This is two summers in a row, the July, August, it's gotten really out of hand.
Yeah.
Like a regular maintenance. And I do understand, I mean, contractors, contractor regardless of location, but this contractor out of Mount Olive, I believe, a couple of hours away, they're, they're not passing by daily or weekly to be impacted by it. And again, you go with quote or the proposal over it, but if you could have some a little bit more local, I think that.
Correct. And Mr. Valencia is.
Instills a bit of accountability if you are nearby and people know it's your work.
Yes.
I can vouch for him also. He actually does the, my office on Redwood, he does quite a good job.
He's, and just for, this is, this price he has provided is for the maintenance as outlined in the contract. He has also came back with suggestions for kind of a deep clean to get them to a state where they're more effectively maintained. So that would be something that we could consider at a later date, but right now, this is his bid for a twelve month contract for mowing, mowing, trimming and blowing, picking up sticks, getting rid of the leaves as outlined in the contract and RFP.
Something clearly needs to be done, a new contract for a year now. But, and that does seem like a reasonable rate to me that both of these complete quotes are well enough in line with each other. The current one is a bit lower, but I think we're getting what we paid for in that sense that it's just not what we would expect. My only other question is, to do a budget amendment, like, could we comfortably move these funds from elsewhere, like to your knowledge, I guess?
I would have to defer to Sean or Jennifer on that. I think.
Councilwoman Baker, in the current budget, we have fifty thousand budgeted.
Okay, so it's just a bit more.
Well, actually, what we had was we had roughly forty-four contract services that tend to do some work over at Cemetery on the Hill because there's a dire need. If you go to the bottom of that cemetery, there's really nowhere to turn, there's nowhere to park. And as we, we were trying to look at something like that, that would just defer the option of doing that unless we could get additional funding.
That's good to know that we could most likely comfortably take on this new contract.
Would they be able to begin immediately?
I think there's just about enough time left in the month that we could provide the notice and get, get a new contractor started in September. Be, it'd be close, but we would try.
Mr. Brown, how often would, I'll say one, be mowing then? Will it be once a month?
So I, you do not have the contract in front of me, but it is laid out that for three months, again, don't, it's close. I think for three months out of the year, it's to be cut once a month. For the other nine months, it's to be cut biweekly.
We, we out at Oakwood, although I've been to all the cemeteries, it's something that has been a huge project for me, but we are losing a lot of our headstones because they haven't been properly edged out, blown off. Last month, and several times I've mentioned to you that there's a pile of trash. It's still there. Is there a reason why?
It must be a new one because we went and got the other one.
Well, there, there's a new one. And no, I didn't make it, but that's something that perhaps more often than every other week or once a month, that town staff could perhaps go out there and pick it up just because it blows and then we mow and then it blows all over the place. The one thing that I've, over the years, harped on this, we need to adopt fresh cemetery regulations and rules. Cole Dickerson, who handles that for us correctly, needs to have updated information to provide to the families when they come up to the cemetery because we are not following not only our own governance, but we are governed by the state of North Carolina. And there are specific rules that we are breaking. And it inhibits proper care for our cemeteries. So I would really suggest that in the very near future, we as a council adopt new policies to provide to people that are trusting us with the care of their loved ones. I highly recommend that we do that soon, but I, I, I agree. I think Juan will do a wonderful job. It's, I think that it's important that our staff oversees what's happening instead of letting it get away from us because the spraying of the weed killers around the foundations of anything, it just destroys the root system and then you lose.
And we eliminated that from the current contract. And to your point, yeah, the, the, the decorations and the mementos are, it's a, it's a touchy subject.
And, and I respect that. I also, I, I respect it. I just know that there are rules and at some point we need to follow them. And so we don't need to do a budget amendment before we accept this because clearly we had money in the account, but we're exceeding that and we've already used two months out of the budget. So do we do this and do a budget amendment later, Sean, or what do we do?
It wouldn't need to be a budget amendment because our budget is defined by department, not line item, correct, Sean? So as long as it was, if I understood you correctly, we have the fifty thousand dollars for cemetery mowing plus the few thousand dollars extra for the work at cemetery on the hill, but it's all in that department already. So it shouldn't require a formal budget amendment.
I move that we accept this bid from Valencia.
It's been moved and property second that we accept the bid, resolution to dissolve the current contract for cemetery grounds maintenance and enter the new contract with the new vendor, Valencia Lawn Care. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have a question. It's not about the mowing, but it is about the cemetery on the hill. I don't know if Sean or Lee can answer that question. You were talking about, we were discussing about the entrances on cemetery on the hill, the one that, that comes from Mineral Springs and how bad, it's horrible and it is a hazard. And there are cars that go through there that does not need to use that entrance, they use it for other things. I know it used to be a gate there. Is there something that we can do because it could be a liability because it is so horrible up there and you can't even, it's, I don't even know how they're going to fix that. You're going to have to probably bulldoze the whole street. But is there something that we could do in the meantime because cars go through there and cars fly through there and it's, it's, it's a hazard. I know, like I said, it used to be a gate there. Is there something that?
Would the cordial gates help? Like what we said on Friday, I would want something.
Chief Lincoln can kind of, you know, vouch for me on that about the cars because we got a call a couple of weeks ago about a car had went down there and a girl tried to commit suicide down there. So cars shouldn't be going down there, period. It's a hazard and like I said, it used to be a gate. If there's something that we could do.
Yeah. Perhaps maybe put some type of, maybe a temporary.
And I asked for a light, they put a light out there because it's really dark out there. And I said, cars. And I said, cars go down there and they don't need to go down that area in the first place. And so, yeah, we need to take some preventative measures about that.
Okay, we have, that motion has been made and seconded and passed. No, call for a vote. All in favor?
We already voted.
Okay.
We did just made a follow-up.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Item number 13, resolution to implement a tree trimming policy for the electric department. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So for a few months now, we've been talking about the need for a tree trimming policy specific to the electric department in maintaining their right of ways in the air. And while we were working on this and doing a little research, we did find, this is kind of just an FYI, we did find ordinance that allows us to trim trees, you know, gives us the authority to trim trees within the travel zone of trucks and to clear sidewalks, things like that. And so that ordinance is specific to that, doesn't really reference anything about maintaining our power line right of ways. And so this draft policy that you were given kind of covers all the different aspects of what the electric department needs to be effective and/or efficient with maintaining trees. The right of way around a power line is 15 feet in all directions. So if you've got three wires, the two furthest ones, you know, we would have to have them trimmed up into the yard clear and have the right of way clear there. So that kind of gives you an idea of what this policy discusses. And if you have any questions on the draft, I'm glad to answer them and work through it, talk through it. But it was, it was, the biggest thing to note with effective power line maintenance is the trees are trimmed for tree health, not aesthetics. So the common, the common way that that's done is essentially you see they're taking an L out of the top of a tree and the power line is passing by within the required clearance. And so they don't always look pretty and I'm sure you've seen plenty of them around. But that, again, is established for tree health, not aesthetics. We also tried to include and be considerate of trees that are rooted on private property that are encroaching into the right of way and also trees within the historic district. Because sometimes the trees in the historic district, if you put a L cut in like that, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna not go well. And so, and so brainstorming, we came up with the fact if it's in the historic district or if it's a tree that's on private property that's in our right of way, you know, we've kind of got to have a standard, but for how we would trim our trees, whether we do it internally or with a contractor. But in those kind of sensitive cases, we thought we could provide the homeowner with the option of kind of making a compromise that the homeowner could pay for an aesthetic trimming by a licensed contractor to, you know, better suit the needs of the area, the neighborhood, things like that, rather than coming through with the standardized cut for tree health, if you will. So if you've had a chance to take a look and have any questions or anything you want to work through, I'm all ears.
So within the historic district, say I have a, a tree and you tell me, hey, we're coming to trim. I have the option at my expense to have an arborist or a tree expert come and trim it before y'all get a hold of it, right?
Yes. I think we had recommended, what, five or, we recommended a five-day notice. And again, at this point, everything is draft, but, you know, we would come say, hey, we're coming through this week. You're in the historic district. You have the option to have the tree trimmed at your expense, you know, as long as it is clear of the power lines and you want it aesthetically pleasing, more so than what, again, the standardized method is. It would be at your expense, but the option is presented in advance of us coming through.
So the trees along Main Street that we've tagged essentially and along Sunset that have been tagged, is that, are those something that the same rules are gonna apply or is that something that is imminent that we're going to?
So most of those trees are diseased, dead or dying?
Yeah.
Our recommendation is to cut them off and grind the stones and not replant, right? We, just fighting a losing battle, of course, keeping planting trees under your power lines.
Right. These are in the Devil's Strip.
And they're in the Devil's Strip, yes.
And that's not the homeowner's.
I think that is the public, the public right of way, yes. But again, we wanted to start the conversation. That's why we put the tape up to say, hey, they don't look good anyway and they're just, they're gonna get worse. Maybe we should get rid of them.
So the, let me ask you, and we talked about this a few weeks ago. A lot of the trees in the roadways and things like that have overgrown. Now, they're not in the power lines. Who's going to maintain those?
The street department has begun trimming some, there's a couple of intersections. I don't have the streets, but.
No, we've talked about a few of them, but.
Couple of intersections. And then I think by the end of the month, they're coming through Mineral Springs. And those trimmings are considered under the ordinance, the existing ordinance for vehicle travel, sidewalk clearance, but does not reference our utility grid.
I'll add one to the list. It's a sidewalk across the street. You can't walk on it because the trees will hit you in the face. But I respect that the electrical department has a hard enough job without the obstacles of the trees. And I know that probably winter would be a great time to get busy on it, but it's something that has to be done. We have to, we're years behind in tree trimming in this town. And heaven forbid a storm comeeth.
And so with that, you know, we've got obviously a bunch of things kind of checked off the list here, but one of the things coming up, we'll be going, hopefully going to bid for a tree trimming contract. And we budgeted a fair amount to get some work done.
I just wanted to ask you about trees that are on other people's property. Maybe they are not here in the city. Do we have to contact them to come and trim it back? Do the town do that? When, when we, when you look outside and you see a tree that's tall and it's swaying and they may come down on your property one day, how does that work? And also, when there's a tree close to the road and the roots have grown up under the road, who's responsible for that?
The trees on private property that are swaying is just gonna be a discussion between the property owners.
Okay.
And the roots that are growing up under the road are just a byproduct of where the tree was planted. And you could cut the road, dig up the roots and repave it, but then in a year or two, the roots are gonna grow right back and do the same thing.
Is that my responsibility or the town's or?
Well, it's, it's our street. It's your tree and, you know, we can only do, we can only work within the confines of what we're allowed.
I've reviewed the policy. It looks very good to me and I've moved it. Will you approve it?
Yeah, second.
Just a quick comment. I think I heard him say five days notification possibly for those trees that are on the personal property in the historic zone. That's not gonna be enough time for people in the historic zone. They won't even be able to get a bid in five days, let alone make a decision on the contract. I just recommend maybe expanding that.
So will I be notified? This is just a quick point. Frequently asked questions, will I be notified? Yes, to get five days that we're, we're coming to trim the trees. And we do have.
The way I read it was you have five days to call town hall and say, I prefer to look into contracting myself rather than you have to have someone there on day five.
Yeah. And we can, we can.
Yeah, we could clarify that just to take out.
Provide clarity to that on the, on the final copy that will get posted.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded that we pass a resolution to adopt the proposed tree trimming policy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Town's historic district within 60 calendar days.
Item 14, reclassification of vacant collection and distribution system supervisor. Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you. The recently vacated position of the town's collection and distribution supervisor occurred on July 31st by Carlton Teyron. You know, he served 36 years here, so it's a big loss, but it's a, it's a milestone for him. So, you know, when we look at how we want to best move forward with that position, the collection and distribution supervisor role is, has been in place for quite a while. However, when the pay study came through and the role was already filled, it was a little more difficult to update it. And so that role specifically has duties that are in line with our other superintendents, specifically the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. Those two gentlemen serve as the ORC for their respective systems. They manage the permit. That's their primary function, managing the operations and maintenance of their plants and their permits. And so the collection and distribution supervisor role also has those responsibilities. And therefore, we think it's in our best interest not only to come in line with what our other superintendents and ORCs are doing, but also for recruiting and providing a path forward for employees. So we want to reclassify that to a, from an hourly position to a salary position. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, so the other positions are presently salary positions as well?
Yes, the, the three superintendent positions in public services are exempt.
Mr. Brown, although I love promoting people and especially giving people opportunities, most of our supervisory in the field, our supervisors are working supervisors. They're, they're the people that are taking the calls and on the jobs and working. So when we switch this to this type of a pay grade, although it's an honor to be a supervisor, are we really doing this person a disservice? Because once you become that, you no longer get several of the benefits that they would currently be getting once they become a supervisor because they're salaried. So perhaps, and I'm not positive regarding salaries, but this essentially could be a huge pay decrease for this person as they're being promoted to be a supervisor. Is there a pay scale that it should, that we should be looking at for our working supervisors that would provide them with a better career path than just being salaried? Does that make sense?
Sort of. So the superintendent role, I would say, in my experience, it's shifted over the last 18 years, right? Superintendents, supervisors, yes, they historically have been considered working supervisors. And if we have a working supervisor, you know, yeah, it, it's good and maybe it's not so good because if we have a working supervisor and a crew leader, it's, it's a little bit redundant. And so the superintendent role, my view of the superintendent role is along the lines of an 80-20 split. It, it should be focused on administration of the permit, the department, the operation, organization, and function of their specific work unit. They don't need to be out getting their hands dirty with the four, five, or six other guys every day. That's what the crew leader is for. Crew leader is boots on the ground, first line of defense for the staff, while the superintendent is, you know, making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's on our collections permit, our distribution permit. And then when I say permit, again, that ORC level, those are the things that our treatment plant superintendents are doing. The pay grade in this case is going from a pay grade 16, I believe, to an 18. And so that covers and is commensurate with the responsibilities that this position is expected to fill or the duties that they're expected to execute, really.
So while you lose the opportunity for overtime, it is a higher fixed pay rate.
Yes.
Two grades higher.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move to approve this recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we improve, approve the reclassification of the vacant collection and distribution system supervisor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Go to item 15. Remember now, we're coming back to item 11 right after this last.
No, we're doing 11 now.
Okay, good enough. Okay. All right. Resolution to implement and update comprehensive solid waste policy for trial period. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the last few months, we've been discussing updating the solid waste collection policy. Touch on all issues from household garbage, bulk waste, yard waste. And what my hope is tonight is that we can finalize the details of about a 12-month trial period. So we can gather operational data to review after that 12-month period and make sure that we're making the best decisions with regards to how we're collecting waste, the scheduling of the collection, the fees associated with the collection. And you were provided with a draft proposal. And I just, I had a couple of things I wanted to point out that were different from, not different, but just afterthoughts of what, what you received. One of the concerns tonight, it was pointed out that we have residents in town that are not physically able to take their can to the curb. We cover that by allowing for and offering medical exemptions. We expect with the route of this side, we probably have maybe 50 to 80, just kind of thinking that we would have that many customers remain backdoor service because they're physically unable to take their car to the curb. And again, one of the biggest things is we look at, when we look at areas that come up with complaints for maintenance. Well, our street department is spending somewhere between 40 and 50% of their time collecting solid waste. We're of the opinion that bulk waste or curbside. We're of the opinion that bulk waste or curbside collection and yard waste is a duty of the solid waste department. And so if that was the case and we were able to adjust our schedule a little bit, we could have the solid waste department collecting solid waste. The street department now frees up fifty percent of their time to mow grass, mow the parks, trim the roads, do all the things that, again, that they're not currently able to do because they're collecting solid waste. Our proposal is split up into two routes, that it's accounting for the future growth. And it's, you see in your draft policy, we provide very clear definitions. We believe that if this policy is voted on, it would be a good foundation for an updated ordinance in the future. However, household trash, we would collect it on Monday and Tuesday. And bulk waste is going to be collected on Friday by appointment only, scheduled request only. Yard waste is going to be collected twice weekly, Wednesday and Thursday. And then, you know, one of the details, large brush piles will be collected with regular yard waste scheduled appointments only. One of the big changes, we're asking that carts would be placed at the curb by five AM on the day of collection. Right now, we suffer severely inefficiency with the time change. So when the guys are, you know, having to go, they can't go until it's light. But they also can't work later in the day because the dump closes at three o'clock. And so we've got this lull in the morning where instead of going and getting it, we've got to kind of get the truck ready and wait around for the sun to be bright enough to say, hey, now I feel safe walking through people's backyards. And so if we had a carts at the curb by five, you know, we'd be looking at starting at five-thirty. Slinging carts and getting the work done. It'd make a big difference in the summer especially. The additional carts, there was a reference to additional carts. Idea for that was if we offered additional carts, we would just offer it at half the rate of the current garbage fee, which would be ten-seventy-five a month for an additional cart. One big thing we need to work on, this is just in general regardless of the policy, is getting, getting way out ahead of adjusted schedules for holidays. So that's a known shortcoming and regardless of this policy, we are going to be working on that. One big thing that we suffer from is our current curbside or bulk waste collection. Right now, it's kind of a free-for-all. I mean, you see piles stacked as tall as I am, blocking the sidewalk, falling out in traffic. I would say the industry standard is the bulk waste collection is typically meant for one or two large items, a dresser and a box spring, for example. Beyond that, we proposed, we proposed fees to account for that. And right now, the town does offer a truck that can be dropped off and a resident can load it themselves. That fee is fifty dollars. You know, we're paying fifty-two dollars a ton and the staff that has to deliver, drop off and haul the waste. So I would consider that we raise that fee in the policy to a hundred dollars. The biggest thing on the yard waste section that we had to update, the Franklin County landfill does not accept brown paper or compostable yard waste bags filled with yard waste. So you saw in the draft, we recommended yard waste, you know, small piles of pine cones, things like that, sticks, plants be placed in paper bags and/or refillable plastic containers that weigh no more than twenty-five pounds, right? Safety is paramount there. And why we had, so on the updated notes here, we'd have to eliminate all the language for brown paper bags and plastic bags for yard waste because they are not accepted. So it's not effective to fill a brown paper bag and then dump, spend the time dumping them when, let's just dump a container and kind of, you know, eliminate that, that middle step. And we did suggest that ten reusable containers per trip is reasonable. And then again, we eliminated the option of compostable or brown paper bags because they are not allowed in the Franklin County landfill.
Is there a reason for that?
I don't know. They, they will not be accepted. We can dump them in the solid waste side if it's in a bag, but not the yard waste side. Solid waste, we pay fifty-two dollars a ton. Yard waste, we pay forty dollars a ton.
So is that what they're doing now? Because everybody puts their bags out now. Is that what's happening?
Yes, and that's how the current policy is written. The current, the existing policy references that, you know, grass clippings and pine cones, for example, must be bagged or they will not be collected. Well, whatever kind of bag it's in, it goes into the municipal solid waste side of the landfill and is charged at the fifty-two dollars a ton.
I have two, two concerns. One, going back to those who are disabled, who are not able to physically carry, to take them to, to think me being myself. What about those who are not able to get to the town hall for, you know, for that medical release that they are not going to know about? And the second one is doing trash pickup once a week instead of twice a week. I could see a big hazard of that. Yeah, with it not being able to put bags on the side because y'all wouldn't pick those up. I could see that being a big mess on the south side. I could just see trash everywhere.
So to touch on your first question, the communication part, we're aware that not everybody communicates the same way. If you get a paper copy of a utility bill, you get a newsletter. If you get an electronic copy of your utility bill, you don't get the newsletter. Some people are on Facebook and the social media, some people aren't. So because this is new, it's different, what we're going to do is if it's approved, we're going to include the policy, all the forms, all the calendars, all the information, and everybody will receive. All active accounts will receive a direct mailer specific to the updated comprehensive solid waste policy only. It won't be a utility bill, it won't be a newsletter. It's going to be all the forms and all the information that you as a homeowner would expect to receive with a change like this. And in regards to once-a-week collection. I would just offer that that's the industry standard. And again, in order to execute the duties of our respective departments, we feel that that's the best place to start. Now, we might find that we can not, we can work through all of the routes currently, we might be able to do it in one day and then we could offer it later, but we don't know because we don't have any baseline to go from. And, you know, to reiterate, the ninety-five gallon garbage containers can accept about eight full, you know, gallon, thirteen gallon kitchen bags. So a full standard kitchen garbage bag, we can fit eight of those in a trash can. And then another thing, again, speaking of communication, and the last note I made on the second, third reviews was when we don't collect something, we're going to start leaving door hangers or can hanger, you know, just something to put on the can with a check mark from the staff as to why the waste was rejected, wasn't properly placed, it was, you know, not bagged. Right now, you, council, you're well aware of the obstacles that the guys are facing with how collection is currently taking place. And we feel that this, for twelve months, this is a great place to start to gather data with the goal of reviewing it and making some tweaks where necessary. But it's, it's comprehensive, it's thorough and it, you know, I want to acknowledge that it is different, but we want to make sure that the fees and the funds that are funding these operations, they're being used as efficiently as possible. And, you know, for what it's worth, when the street department has to go collect solid waste, that's, that's not efficient. And that's one example, and we're hoping to correct venue with this. And so I'm asking that with the changes that I acknowledged, since the, this was given to you guys, that this policy be adopted for a twelve-month trial basis and we will start gathering many data points and reviewing that. We can review them quarterly or we could just have a twelve-month review and look at all the information and see where we're headed.
Okay. Where would the citizens be notified of the changes?
The citizens will be notified of the changes. If this is approved, everyone will get a printed copy of the policy, of the forms, of the calendar. And, you know, the big one is the rollout exemptions for those that need some extra assistance and that need to remain curbside. So everything will be delivered directly in a standalone mailer to the residents that have an active account.
Lee, I've got several issues.
Sure.
Overall, I think it's a good policy. I agree with it. But first, I think we need to add recycling. We're taking a lot away from our folks. And, you know, as you and I have already started discussing, I think we need to add that as a mandate. We will have curbside recycling added to this within twelve months.
I would have to say that that's something to consider. Again, we have no operational data to go from.
I guess you have twelve months to get that.
It does. And I would also, I also know from past experience that that's an expensive, that's an expensive line item. And along those lines, you know, for full transparency, you saw the guys, the guys love what they do. But we need to be clear that if it was a contracted service, it's, it's a lot less. But I think.
We also know that the state has money out there to help us set up the curbside recycling.
Set up but not maintain, right? And that's.
Well, we're talking about reducing pickups. I mean, right now, we're doing approximately nine pickups a month, so we're going down to four. And then if you add curbside recycling once a month, that would be five. If you do it twice a month, six, it's still a substantial reduction in the number of pickups.
So.
So let's pick us, we have to pay a recycling and to pick up.
You have to a vendor or an additional fee.
We have tipping fees for the landfills now.
Well, all the other towns in Franklin County are doing it. And the typical cost is less than ten dollars.
And I think what we, you know, there was a question today, I can't remember what it was, but there was a couple of questions we were going to maybe do a community poll on. We can put that on the list about the interest in recycling and.
Well, yeah, the issue here is it, is for us to encourage this, not to see what we, we know it's not being done.
Right.
Alright. This is not only a service, it's also an important environmental issue. And the state is putting on a big push to get all municipalities, I think what it is, it's something like eighty percent now we're doing.
Right. Yes. I think it's worth considering, you know, you're well aware of what the solid waste budget is. You know, without diving into it, I would expect that it would be similar.
Second issue, the bagging of trash. That to me encourages one of, a lot of use of plastic bags, which is another environmental issue. And you know, I don't know that everybody can afford that and.
So if, if we're operating curbside unbagged trash is less of an issue. Of course, we can make it part of the policy and expect it. But, you know, right now, the unbagged trash, if we don't change the unbagged trash, is the biggest, most disgusting burden on the staff, right?
Okay. But you're talking, so if we go to curbside, is it necessary to have the trash bagged? It just needs to be in the trash.
It is because on a windy day, you don't want flyaway trash.
And the biggest contributor to litter in my garden is you can tell where it's pieces falling out of unbagged or loosely bagged trash.
Right, because it's not just when they're, it is when they're tipping, but when they're driving.
Oil wrappers, things like that. I don't think it necessarily means like, not bulkful, but like slightly larger than your average kitchen trash.
Right.
Maybe an exception can be made for that. And it's not different from our current policy because I know sometimes I'll put like a pet food bag in there. It's not bad. It doesn't get picked up. That's a need for not putting it in the pack.
And the other, the other thing, it was brought up tonight, but it's also in the policy, is we, believe it or not, the current policy does not allow for the collection of cardboard. So we did address that we will collect cardboard. It will be collected at the, at the curb, you know, when it's broken down, placed next to the trash can, so.
Is that going to be recycled?
The town of Lewisburg does not offer recycling.
Alright, number three, your policy on yard waste. One place it says maximum size is six feet and another place it says the maximum length is four feet.
Depending on the diameter of the limbs, the diameter of.
Yeah, that's what the first is, but then later down in the policy, it says the maximum length is four feet, kind of counter.
Would it make everything four feet then? It, it, it needs to be easily movable by the guys, right? This is a lot of bending, twisting, stooping, hunching, throwing, twisting and again, you've seen the piles that are out there.
Oh, I agree.
And the intent is to provide quick, efficient service where we can pick up and go. And so I think four feet is the best option for everything.
You said there's going to be free mulch. What, how are we going to notify people that when it's available and where?
The only, the best way to notify people that the mulch is available is because it's not always there. Probably the best way to do it is going to be on social media and word of mouth.
What about the utility bill?
So the utility bill goes to print. We can make that work, I think.
And then you talked about having a place for drop off of yard waste?
That was something to consider rather than offering curbside collection. You know, we're only required to offer household garbage collection. That's, that's the rules. Yard waste, bulk waste, that's all additional services that the town of Lewisburg chooses to offer. And so just as we are brainstorming ideas to keep, you know, we can try to maintain fees, efficiencies and staff cons. fees, efficiencies, and staff considerations, all the things, right? Maintenance of vehicles, increase in fuel costs, labor, all the things. An idea came up that what if we did not offer curbside yard waste and bulk collection, and instead, on a quarterly basis-
I guess what I'm getting at is let's have both. You know, still do that, but, I mean, I'm probably one of your biggest offenders in the past, but I mean, you know, when I go to trim my trees in my yard, I mean, I, I can fill up three, four trailers. All right? It's not going to meet your criteria. So under these current rules, I guess I'm going to have to take it out to the landfill.
Uh, one of the options is, one of the things that we're looking at, and I can't remember if it was spelled out in there, but offering on those bigger piles, the bulky brush piles.
You can call, that you can call to-
You could call, schedule, and we would, we would probably show up with the chipper. Chip it on site, haul it off, and then dump it. Once we get enough, make the notification that mulch is available. So because if we did both, then we're offering the, the service, but then we're having, we'd have to pay, you know, the, uh, pay for the rental of the containers, and then the tipping fee on the containers, if, if we offered the dump site.
So you're saying for these large piles, you're, would there be a charge for that?
I think it's, uh, recommended that, I think one, it was like one or two services a year, you know, for those great big piles that are included.
Maybe similar to bulk pickup, that you get two free and anything more than that.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Brown, my turn. I have several questions. I've probably been contacted regarding this garbage thing about as much as I have been contacted about the cemetery. No one wants this to happen. They don't understand why the fee is going to stay the same, and they're provided half the service. I, and personally, I have a problem with that. My biggest concern is, what if Delete and I have a big party? And I have more than one garbage can worth of garbage? Now what do I do? I mean, it's not every week, right? But we're going to have a humdinger of a, get together, and we're going to have some trash.
Right.
So now what do I do with my trash?
Well, you have a couple options. We would, if it's something that you see is going to occur on the regular, we would offer you the option to rent another can, or, you know, pay the, pay the fee for an additional can. Again, industry standard for where these ideas are coming from. And if that wasn't an option, if it was, the bags were neatly placed next to the can-
But that, that clearly states in here that that's a no-no, so we don't get it both ways.
No, we, that's, sorry, that's addressed for around holidays.
Okay, well-
But if it's, if it's not on the holiday, we, we would just ask that you take care of it or put it in the cart next week.
What do you want me to do, drop it off at town hall until the following week? It, it, this isn't like a real thing, because people, I mean, we write one thing, and then we don't stick to it. So it says clearly in here, at one point, that cardboard boxes are essentially a toxic material. And then later in here, it says, put it next to your garbage can. But then, if you keep reading, it says, don't put anything next to your garbage can, because then we're going to send you hate mail, in which nobody wants. And then, I guess there's going to be garbage can police, because if you don't move your garbage can from the curb back to the back of your house, now who's going to enforce that? I would have called town hall.
I do.
So I'm just asking, who's going to enforce this? And then you're stating that our street department, and I'm not picking on departments because our guys are killing it, okay? But you're saying our, half of our work comes from our street department regarding this, in which we're going to alleviate that from them and put it on the guys that do the trash pickup. So we just hired possibly three additional people for the street department, but we're taking off half their burden. So does that mean all the contractual mowing that we have in town is now going to go back to the street department and in-house and save us money that way? Because you don't, you don't get the cake and the icing and the cupcakes and the sprinkles. So we're making it essentially harder for one department, eliminating work for another department, so-
So they could do the job they were hired to do.
And this has been part of their job.
No, it is. We have been subsidizing our solid waste through our general budget, because we're using our street department to do a job that should be solid waste. And if you're going to do that big party, you can carry it to the convenience center, all right? We, this is industry standard, all right? My daughter lives in New Bern, this is what she has to do, okay? You go in Raleigh, this is what Raleigh has to do. We are the only town in our area that offers backyard pickup.
I have never heard of it before.
It's right, it doesn't, when we tried to contract this out, what, two, three years ago, we couldn't do a contract, because the, all the commercial companies says, we don't do that, nobody does that. It's unsafe, we've already injured one of our employees, who's now permanently disabled because of a injury he suffered picking up trash. All right? Yes, this has been nice. The reality is, if we're going to do something according to, one, the industry standards, people, the same people who are asking for this twice a day pickup are also asking for us to keep our tax rates low, and that don't work. So if we're going to be able to keep our tax rates low, we've got to modernize how we do things.
The other problem I have is with the leaf pickup, stopping it in February, it's not conducive. Most people aren't out into their yard until March or maybe early April before the heat comes. That's the other recommendation that I have for that.
So the current, again, the current policy for leaf collection is, I think, what was presented, November 1st to February 1st would be designated as leaf season. This last year, we offered two additional weeks of collection later into the spring, and we received about 10 in requests, and that's something we can do again.
Okay. There, you have an A and B day. Okay. If the holiday falls on a Monday, does that mean they would get them B day, or they, they are just skipped for the week?
Holiday falls on a Monday, everything will be shifted later in the week, there'll be no bulk collection on Friday.
So, um, A would be Tuesday.
Okay. And, um, so, but when this starts, because it hasn't started, because some people have been skipped for the whole week of picking up trash. And, um, so when this starts, everybody will, you, everybody will know what day.
Yes.
Okay.
The start, the goal of it would be included in the direct mailer.
Okay.
One final question. Say there is a hurricane or a storm, something that comes through that produces additional yard waste, then do we become flexible to get that picked up through the neighborhoods? I mean, you're saying that twice a year, you get, say, bulk pickup of yard waste. Say a storm comes through, do we have leniency then, or is-
I think flexibility is, flexibility is, I don't want to say, use the word assumed, but just like we referenced, the, around the holidays, right? We, we're expecting an increase in volume. When there's a major weather event with limbs and debris, it's given that, you know, we're going to need to collect that. That would, I would describe that as a one-off event separate from, you know, the policy.
It's all covered by disaster relief funds.
Yeah, depending on the size of the event, classification, it's, it's covered elsewhere.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Not, could I have a motion?
I move that we approve this resolution.
Okay, it's been moved and property second that we approve the resolution to approve proposed solid waste collection policy on a 12-month trial basis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 15, career ladder program for the Lewisburg Fire Department.
Mayor Town Council, thank you. With the recent hiring of our new fire chief, he was tasked with providing a career ladder program, and his role is to facilitate daily operations of the fire department, which includes ensuring that the town has adopted and implemented a career ladder program. Attached, you will find a career ladder program that identifies the levels for the fire department. This career ladder program aligns within the policy and procedures established for the town of Lewisburg. And as you're aware, the town's fire department has never had a career staff program available to employees. Attached, gives an indication of what we'd like to implement at the present time, saying that it would not be changed somewhere along the way, but right now, these are things that we see that would help us take the Lewisburg Fire Department and meet its future needs. So I'm requesting that you approve the career ladder step program for the Lewisburg Fire Department.
Any questions from the council?
How is this going to affect, if you haven't decided?
So if it's adopted, then we'll start looking at the individuals that we have and see where they may fall, to find out where they would fall within the current career staff that we would adopt tonight. And then that would help us, I mean, I think we'd start pretty immediate trying to work on getting this stuff established, and determining who is, you know, where people are and working towards. Because in this, you will see that there's, like, the fire chief is, is a paid current. Eventually, we'd like to see an assistant fire chief at a future position that would be paid, Italian chiefs or future positions. So we, we told you where we are currently, or, or what we have, but we'd like to reevaluate that to make sure that we're getting employees where they should be in, in this program.
Was this part of what we asked for at the beginning of the year?
During this process. During the process of the hiring, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. And I was, I was just wondering, I know we asked for this back in January, February, and I was, I was just wondering, was this part of what we had asked for?
Yes, ma'am.
Back then.
So, Mr. Mablin, currently, in our current budget, not all these positions are funded, correct? Some of them-
Because, exactly, because everything, basically, right now is listed as like a fire engineer. Everything, that's what every, you know, per, in person is listed as. So as we go through this process and look where we fall on the steps, it may be that there may be a little pay increase, or there may not be a pay increase. It's just getting them to the correct level that they're supposed to be.
So then, will, like, Becky Beasley? Do a job description-
She will help us, yes, ma'am.
And the pay-
Yes, ma'am.
And stuff like that for the decision. So this is basically restructuring?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. This is something that we made absolutely clear in, where we brought in a new chief, the direction that we wanted to go. We clearly stated that we wanted to head in a new direction, and this is the first step, with the help of our police chief in, in doing that.
Will the same be for the police department, if they want to restructure and add positions and things like that? The same thing, they allowed it for them?
Yes. That, once they decide how they want to restructure and what their restructuring needs may be, then we'll bring that forward.
They've already got quite a lot more defined range for the fire department. Patrol officer, sergeant, detective, captain.
All right. Any other questions? Number 15. If not, could I get a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and property second that we adopt this program for the career ladder program for the Lewisburg Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Item number 16, administrative report. Mr. Mablin?
Mayor Town Council, thank you. Our fourth Friday night on the tar will be this Friday, August the 15th, and the group for this event will be Soul Psychedelic Orchestra. If you have not heard them, you should actually Google them on YouTube, they've got a great genre there, so we're expecting a, a big night on Friday night. The town has received its CO or certificate of occupancy for the community station at 124 North Main. The space looks awesome, and it's available for rent. If anyone wishes to rent, just contact town hall. The economic development coordinated position has been posted, resumes are being received and are under review. Staff continues to hold a weekly one-on-one with PB Mayor's. And just an update to let you know that our weekly one-on-one with LGC is now monthly versus weekly. We do provide a written, a statement to them on a weekly basis, but otherwise, we meet once a month. And, actually, I almost forgot, I got some financials this afternoon. So let me pass those out, my apologies.
Mr. Mablin, is there any way that you could email the council, the information that's provided to the LGC, just so that we all have an idea of-
Yes, ma'am, I sure can.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
First, the status on the audits?
They're actually working on those, I had a meeting today with them, we meet every Tuesday at 10:30. They're finalizing everything for '22, '23, hoping to have something. Again, we've been through a lot of things, inventory, fix stacks, that we cleaned up a lot. And I know you all have heard that before, but we are working to get that done, and they're looking probably-
We're going to actually see-
You're going to see something, as of today, they've mentioned by the end of the month, maybe mid-September. So we'll have something there. And then things should go a lot smoother, because we've cleaned up a lot of this stuff that needed to be cleaned up.
Exactly. The EDD, that position is going to report directly to this council, so-
That's, that's not the way it was adopted.
No, I think it was adopted that way, wasn't it?
Yes, sir, it was adopted to go straight to town administrator. If, if we need to change that, then I need to reclassify that.
I don't remember discussing it, or reporting.
Well, I think the town, this council ought to be involved in the interviewing of this person and the selection. I would suggest that we have, I don't know that we need to do the same as we did with the fire chief, but I think we ought to at least have a subcommittee appointed by the mayor to interview, to participate in the interviewing of this position. And I'd make that as a motion.
Okay. So, okay, I'm, I'm, they need to guide us on the, so we can take a motion to have that position, that's the new economic development slash grant writer, to, to still report to the, to the-
I think it ought to report directly to the council. And that it, that we be directly involved with the hiring, you know, the interviewing and the hiring of that position.
Okay. So then there will be, this will be an additional position, in addition to the fire, town clerk, and- town clerk and administrator to answer to the board.
To the council.
To the council. Any, any questions about that from the council? Okay, all right, we have a motion to. Okay, it's been moved and properly second that the future EDC slash grant writer, that we will be hiring, will report directly to the council. Questions about it? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, eyes happy. Okay. All right. Okay, the next is the mayor's report. And I have something I wanted to say to the, to citizens. Well, when I first stood before you and asked for your trust, I promised to lead with integrity, fight for what is right, and build a future that we could all be proud of. Tonight, I come before you again, not to ask for your vote, but to reaffirm my commitment to each of you and to the town we all love. Over the past four years, we've faced challenges. They've tested our resolve. Yet together, we've risen to meet them all. We continue to fight to protect our town from harmful legislation such as HB 183, defend the rights of our most vulnerable residents, to push back against efforts that seek to divide us. Through it all, I've remained steadfast advocate for justice, equity, and opportunity. Under my leadership, Lewisburg has made real progress. We've attracted new business, invested in infrastructure, and improved community safety. We've supported our seniors, uplifted our youth, and taken bold steps toward revitalizing our neighborhoods. We've shown the power of unity. When we come together, we can achieve the extraordinary. But our work is not done. I envision a future where Lewisburg serves as a model for what a small town can be. A place where families thrive, every resident feels heard and valued, and prosperity reaches every corner of our community. With your continued support, I will work tirelessly and expand affordable housing, enhance local job opportunities, and invest in things that make Lewisburg special. Our parks, our schools, our downtown, and above all, our people. This election is not about more than one campaign. It's about the soul of our town and the direction we choose for our future. I believe in Lewisburg. I believe in you. And I believe that together, we can continue to build a brighter, stronger, and more inclusive community for all. Join me in this journey, and let's keep Lewisburg moving forward. All right, item number 17. All right, item number 18, the police report. Mr. Lincoln.
I'll be fairly quick with mine. We had a vehicle pursuit, it was a speeding violation. Suspect in that was caught by Vans County. We canceled our chase after the suspect driving got a little crazy. But he was caught. We had an alleged sexual assault at Walmart. We identified who the suspect was, but the victim didn't want to press charges, so the investigation ended. Want to recognize officers that aren't here tonight, but officers Mancini and Schumay completed their DARE training. So hopefully, coming up this school year, Lewisburg Elementary School, Cross Creek Charter School, and Terrell Lane Middle School will have some DARE education coming. Officer Max Power started K-9 training for K-9 Jaeger. And that will complete at the end of this month. And detectives Dylan Moore and Elliot Coker completed their FBI leader trilogy. They completed the executive leadership institute. And with their completion, my previous completion, that gives the Lewisburg Police Department the department trilogy. We should have received that award later this month. National night out was August the 5th. We had to change the venue last minute from Jordan Park to the fire department. Chief Fuller was gracious enough to lend us the most of the fire department base. And I think it was a pretty decent turnout, especially for changing the venue within just a few hours of the event. Other than that, I reached out to DOT for clarification on the meeting that's coming in front of Sandalwood on Bickett. They said they would like to have it done by October or November, and they'll let us know about the timeline.
This may be a good year.
Yeah. Other than that, I wanted to thank Mr. Brown for the operations department, electrical department, and James with IT for getting us out of this room and back into the police.
All right, fire report, Chief Fuller?
I don't have anything, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number 20, council comments. Councilman Stone?
I'll try to make this as clear as I can. First, on the night out, we had planned on doing a bicycles empty rodeo. That had to be canceled because of the weather. Hope to, getting with Terry Saturday night, see if we can reschedule that. And as I said earlier, I think one of my big pushes is gonna be getting curbside recycling. Meeting with folks from the state, there are funds out there, and I'll just get that started. And I'll be prodding lead in that direction.
Councilmember Woods?
I also attended the police night out. I want to commend Chief Lincoln and the police officers and all those who helped and assisted our departments, whoever, whatever they did. It was a great night, just to see all the smiles on the kids' faces and just the community coming together. That's what it's about, the community coming together as one. I truly enjoyed it. I hope to see more community events of the fire department, police department, you know, just bringing us together. I don't know when the basketball court dedication is gonna be. I hope that'll be soon, but I want, you know, the benches, the cost of those, and can we see sponsors to purchase those benches out there at the basketball court? So the town doesn't have to incur that expense. Businesses downtown, I'm pretty sure that they will want to advertise, we could see sponsors and and donate it. And also, school is opening August the 25th. We're gonna be back in, back in session. I asked council, you know, we are here to serve our community, and it would be awesome to see some of your faces, the kids, to see some of your faces, the people who represent them at open house of Terrell Lane, Lewisburg High School, Lewisburg Elementary. Just be out there, just greeting and say, welcome to school, you know, we are here for you since we are part of the community and we took an oath to serve our community. I would truly love to see some of council, some of the people from the town out there in support of our youth.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stein?
I was gonna mention, good luck to all the children in the new school year. As the mayor just simply stated, there is an upcoming election. And I would plead to the community that it is very important that you take your candidates seriously and that you focus on how important it is that you put the right people in the council seats or in the mayor's position to make this community grow and be a wonderful place for everyone to live.
Councilmember Wright?
I just want to thank everyone for being here this evening. And let's do a special prayer for our students that are going back to school. Let's be careful with the foot to the metal when you're driving down the streets and you see some standing, because some of them will be getting on the bus for the first time. And they may not know how to stand there if they drop something, if it rolls or something. So let's be careful when we going through a zone where you see students there. Just wave at them, slow down so you can wave at them. Just encourage them to have a great day. And I just thank for everything that's been going on. I'm still every week working with the car tar in Henderson. And it's, I do have another meeting this month, Thursday, the fourth Thursday in the month. And it's still a great atmosphere to go out and see our seniors, see the people, talking to the people on the street. And yes, let's everybody get out and do your part as a citizen of Lewisburg to when the election time comes around, please get out and go, thank you.
Councilmember, thank you.
Nothing additional, thank you all for coming, as always.
Okay, we have a closed session at this time. Could I get a motion to go into closed session for personnel 143, that's 318, that 11, 8, that's 6?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second that we close and go into closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Out of closed session.
Some moved?
Seven.
It's been moved in property second that we come out as closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next thing on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No, don't have to say no action was taken in this closed session.
Yes.
Okay.
No action was taken on any of the personnel matters tonight.
Can you make a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Motion? Okay, it's removed in property second that we adjourn.
Aye.